Proceed.
I'm okay with that. I would just like to, I guess, state for the record, it's very difficult to, with fidelity, review this information on, you know, very little time. And I just, I struggle with having conversation publicly regarding this work when I've had very little time to review it, so.
So it looks like we will not discuss anything. We will not discuss, it looks like numbers three, number five, and I think those are the only two. Anyone jump in and correct me if I'm wrong?
I thought that we made changes to number four.
Number four, we would not talk about either. I don't, oh, except for there are numbers there. Never mind, sorry.
Yep, there's, yep, there's numbers for that one. So Superintendent Ahear, if we could just go through one, two, and four for this conversation and just talk about what you, the changes that you made aboard for each one, I'll just ask you if, you know, if you have any feedback or if this is, we think we're moving in the right direction and we'll just discuss those three only this evening. Superintendent Ahear.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say, I think I would pull one, two, because there are in one B and one C. We don't have definitive numbers.
Which one? Say that again.
One B and one C, so I would pull one as well.
Okay.
May I, may I, may I ask that we actually discuss it? I understand that the numbers aren't there, but these are very different proposed interim guardrails. And so if, if, if the numbers, assuming that we had numbers in there that, that met your satisfaction, would that interim guardrail meet your needs?
So are then you wanting to, so let's just start with number one Superintendent Ahear. What is it that you, are you asking the board if what you currently have, looking at the disproportionality between black students and all students would suffice? And the disproportionality of out-of-school suspension rates between black students and all students in grade six through eight, you just want to know if that would suffice for the board?
If, 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 I'm not asking for approval, I'm just asking if, if the numbers that I had in there for the data points were acceptable, is this closer to what you were intending with that guardrail?
Board, I will leave you to answer that question.
So Tom, I do have a quick question on number one. In trying to distinguish between one B and one C, one is really around office referrals higher than level two, level two or higher. And then one C really goes to out-of-school suspensions. I feel like in some respects, those are really a progression from one to another. And I don't know that that differentiates at least enough for me around the notion of discipline, because I realize that office referrals are very different than out-of-school suspensions. But really, when you think about discipline overall, those are all on that long continuum. So help me understand the differentiation that you hope to achieve by recognizing level two or higher referrals versus out-of-school suspensions, because at some point, they could be one and the same.
Right, well, what I tried to do was mirror what I did with number two and split it by grade level. So one B addresses grades nine through 12 and one C, six through eight.
Mm-hmm. So high school versus middle school?
Right. And we, in my view, we have more work to do at the middle school level in terms of finding, finding opportunities to serve students. And, you know, we don't have as many options at, at middle school and in addressing student needs without going to an out-of-school suspension for a, you know, for a consequence. We, we've made more growth there at high school, middle school. In my view, we still have a ways to go to, you know, to, to be, to have integrity with our, with our, with our student discipline policy and not be placing students in an alternative setting.
So can I ask, I'm sorry, go ahead. I didn't mean to cut you off.
No.
I was just gonna ask another question, because I feel like, when I think about continuation of systemic racism, I feel like this is all being filtered through a discipline lens. And I wonder if there is an opportunity, when we think about systemic racism, to think about a student achievement lens. How many students are we pushing to gifted and talented? How many students are we pushing to higher-order work? How many students are we pushing to central campus, central academy? You know, I understand that discipline has really sort of been the way that we've attempted to suggest that disproportionality exists in the district. But I think that there are other ways to reflect on a system of racism that really speaks more to the academics as opposed to the discipline.
Yeah, I would love that. I, I, I was hearing, I was hearing, and maybe I heard it a little too clearly at the exclusion of other things in our last conversation. What, so could I ask if, if I could leave one B or one C and replace one of them with something that's specific to academics?
I think that would be a more balanced approach, certainly.
Okay.
And if, if you would do that, Tom, if I could ask, like whichever of one B and one C is the most disproportionate, where you find that we have the greatest need to make change, I would rather keep that one over the other.
I agree. Yep. Okay. That's very helpful.
I have comments, actually a question. I'm curious why.
I can't hear whoever's talking.
Sorry, this is Jackie. First is a question. I'm actually curious why we single out black students. And it may seem like a silly question, but there's kids from lots of different ethnicities. And so I'm just wondering why we're singling out black students, but not inclusive of other significant populations that we have within our school.
Yeah, so two reasons. Number one, I found it rather wordy to, to address with specific targets, multiple different groups. But the more important reason is that, that black students are by far negatively impacted by this disproportionality.
So the question I would ask was, how do we know that? And do we see data at the board table to show us that? I'm just, I just want to make sure we're being thoughtful about, the data may play itself out, but how do we, how do we have a window into that but for asking to see it?
Yeah, well, I can certainly show you the data from last year that the board did see.
I think my concern is, yeah, okay, I'll just leave it at that and I can think through it. I think sometimes when, it's very important to call out areas of imperative or crisis. So I don't want to say that that's not important. I do think that when you do that, there's large groups of people that may get overlooked.
So I hear, I completely hear what you're saying, Ms. Norris. Would it be, would it be more meaningful to the board to include multiple subgroups and then just have sub-goals beneath that?
Yeah, I mean, I'll look for feedback from other people, like, because everybody, every, we should be looking to change the disproportionality across the board, even though the gap may be more significant with black students. If we said BIPOC, would we, sorry to interrupt.
Well, that, or is there a way to look at the student composition? And we talk about teachers reflecting the composition of our student body. Is there a ways, as you're talking about academic achievement or certain targets, that could maybe reflect? I mean, I would say, I would say, yeah, black and Indigenous people of color or people of color, but then I also want to make sure that we're appropriately, I mean, being, like you're talking about. How do we make sure that we're being representative of all of our students? Which is sort of the whole point of this goal, right?
So how about that it just does not reflect disproportionality amongst our students? Or something very general, like, I don't want to keep going into more subgroup, subgroups, or sub-interim goals, because then that gets so far down. But just rather, it doesn't reflect the, does not reflect disproportionality.
Okay, okay.
Because I also think that by having things to compare it to, the disproportionality may be more glaring. So I think, I hope I gave enough context so that, and I appreciate everybody else helping me.
Yeah, I think I appreciate where, where you would like to go with that.
Okay, the second, and it was, we talked about one A, and it was, how do you measure integrity? I don't, I don't know that that's clear, so that would be my feedback on, on how you measure integrity. The MTSS with integrity. I'm recalling that there's a rubric that's followed as, as the leaders are doing visits. Is that correct, Ms. Sawyer?
Yeah, that's correct. And kind of in the same way, in the same, same manner that we do integrity checks with curriculum implementation.
Thank you. So let me just maybe share back what I heard. Turn on my mic. Okay, so we're okay with one A. We're going to take either one B or one C, but limit or maybe expand our definition of disproportionality across all student groups. And then add a measure or a guardrail that speaks to academics relative to systemic racism or inequitable treatment.
That's what I have too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay Superintendent Ahear, would you like to move to number two?
Yeah, number two, I, I split out, now I don't remember exactly how it was, how it was listed the first time, but two C is the same. Two A and two B, I just chose for, I split the, the students into two different groups, grades three through five, and then secondary grades six through 12, and chose the area on Panorama where we were most discrepant and in that, in that category. So self-efficacy was the one for grades three through five and sense of belonging for grades six through 12. And I also increased the, 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 the growth by a bit.
Any feedback? Go ahead, Ms. Sawyer. Nope, go ahead.
So the growth, sorry, I'm just looking at that, because from 51 to 54% and then from 30 to 33, so it's, it's about a 3% growth. Is it feasible to think it could grow more than that?
Potentially, you know, but these, the, the measures on, on Panorama do tend to have some fluctuation and we don't have a lot of history with it. So I did increase it larger than what I had it before in response to some, some board comments. I, I'll take another look at that with Panorama and see if there's something that, I want to make sure that they're achievable. But if we feel like we could, you know, impact that more greatly and expect to see that result if we do everything right, I would certainly revisit that. I'll make a note to that effect.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Tom, just a real quick question then on the Phase One SEL under two C, which I know hasn't changed substantially from when we discussed it before. But I have to assume that we would already be on the road to full implementation. So is this really a stretch goal? Because it seems to me that, given sort of where we were with SEL as one of our board goals, even though we have not assigned any specific measures to it, et cetera, it just seems to me that this would, this is sort of a no-brainer. Am I missing something here?
No, I just, going from 22 to the full, to the full gamut is a, is a pretty large undertaking, I would argue.
So let me ask this question then. After we get through full implementation, what would our vision be for SEL relative to this particular guardrail? I mean, what else would we be thinking through or thinking about?
Yeah, just like any other goal, an interim goal, if the, the target is reached, we would come back to the table and either write a new goal, write a new guardrail, or ask that a new interim be defined to properly measure. If, you know, if not, all of the interim guardrails are being met, then we wouldn't want to take that guardrail off the table, I would assume. But it would certainly be an opportunity for us to come back to the table and, and celebrate as well as, you know, look at what next steps would be.
Thank you for that, Ms. Marcher. And the other thing I would say to that, Ms. Caldwell-Johnson, is that in two C, I think, once, once we have solid implementation at all the buildings, we'll have a lot of other opportunities to identify data-based areas for growth. Because as you said, we're, we're early on in the district-wide implementation of a comprehensive SEL program.
Gotcha. Our lights just went out, so. Okay. Be careful, Jackie, don't fall. There's a step down right there.
Thank you. I'm getting there.
You're not tall enough. There we go, there we go. Yeah, that was.
Kelly and Dr. Ahear, you just missed a beautiful demonstration of the arts.
Okay. I have a question about the Panorama survey results. And can you just give me an idea, either where I could find or just like an overall, like, how have we been progressing over the years? I mean, has it gone from 28% to 30%? Like, is 33% realistic? Is that, I mean, what, can you, can I get an idea of the trend line and how this fits into that?
This is, this is so new that we don't have a trend line.
So last year was our first year?
Yeah.
Got it.
Hey, Tom, just as a point of reference too, is there any correlation between implementation of Phase One SEL and Panorama? Is there a correlation between those? And if, if one is done, then we can assume that the numbers will increase?
There better be.
Okay.
We're fully expecting that, yes.
Yeah.
No, good question. I don't mean to, I don't mean to.
Yeah, no.
Oh, absolutely, there should be.
Yeah, okay. Well, and to your point, and I don't know who just asked that, but could we assume that the number could be larger? And certainly, if our implementation goes as planned, then maybe the increase that we're measuring could also grow substantially, so, okay.
It should also have a positive impact on number one. It's not, it's not a one-to-one correlation, but it should be, you know, there should be a correlation to how we improve in the general area of number one as well.
Yep, thank you. I don't have anything else on number two. And I don't think we've made any changes there that I've noted.
Doesn't look like there's any changes. I think Superintendent Ahear was just gonna look at, review the Panoramic data. I know that Ms. Sawyer brought up, I believe it was Ms. Sawyer, brought up about the going from 30% to 33% and 51% to 54%, if that could be greater, or if he felt like that was the best way to move forward. And so he was gonna review that data for two A and two B.
Yep, that's what I have too.
Okay, great. Let's move on to number four.
Okay, so for number, I'm sorry, number three, did you say?
No, three, we were holding off on because of the, we didn't have the numbers in there. So we were gonna go ahead and go to number four. Three and five, we won't be discussing this evening. But I think you just, did you want feedback on if you just, if we felt like you were on the right track? Is that what you wanted?
Yeah, I think that's what he's asking for.
Yeah, that's, that would be most helpful.
Okay.
Because it's, if, if the board doesn't think these are responsive to the intended interpretation, then I don't want to spend more time on these without creating new, new measures.
So I will offer just a, a comment, and the first thing that sort of stuck out to me on three A is there's definitely a difference between being interviewed and being hired. And if our goal is to have a district staff that reflects the demographics and cultural responsiveness of our student population, then it's easy to say, we tried, but we didn't quite get there, without having an intention of really working hard on the hiring end. So I wonder if there might be a stronger measure there? Or if not, maybe why you decided that this was the right measure?
Yeah, well, I get, I get a little eerie of, of putting pressure on, on folks doing hiring to hit a certain target and, and, and maybe shortchanging the process. What we have learned with our leadership positions for sure is that if we, if we're very intentional about ensuring that we're interviewing a greater percentage of candidates of color, that our hiring percentage goes up significantly. And I think that we have a, if we say number of hires without addressing number of interviews, we're not hitting the systemic issue of actually getting a pool of candidates of color that are, are, you know, that are actually in the pool. So, I mean, we certainly could, could change that to a hiring percentage, if, if that's the board's will. We can do that.
Yeah, I think we have to be careful that we don't, you know, do quotas or anything like that. But I do think that there's a level of intentionality that extends well beyond interviewing to hiring that I think we could miss if we don't push hard on the hiring piece.
Do you?
Right.
Do you have a recommendation?
I don't.
I know. I'm trying to figure out how we would, is AJ on? I think.
He's not.
Oh, he's not. I'm just wondering how other districts may address this if they, there's a line between, I think, both of what you're saying.
I'll, I'll investigate that one more. I definitely see what you're saying, Karen. I don't want to get us into a, a place where we're, where we're, you know, setting quotas, because I don't think that's particularly helpful. But I see where this, where this is less than satisfying.
Yeah, it all, it actually feels a little bit like a check-the-box exercise. Okay, did that, you know?
Looking at anybody else on three A or any, anything to add for three B and three C?
Okay, can, Tom?
Yeah.
Under three B, where it says student-teacher relationships. Again, this is a Panorama student survey. Help me understand the distinction between student-teacher relationships, sense of belonging. Because I feel like there's some overlap there, but I just need to understand a little bit more how those are distinguished by Panorama.
Yeah, let me, give me a minute here, and I can give you a tighter definition. Just about there, hold on.
No problem.
Sense of belonging is described as how much students feel that they are valued members of the school community.
Okay.
And then there are a number of questions that they answer. And then the computer's kind of slow here. And then teacher-student relationships is, is, is explained as how strong the social connection is between teachers and students within and beyond the classroom.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else before we move to number four?
Hey, how does three B, sorry, support three? Maybe I'm missing.
I was, I was connecting it mostly to cultural responsiveness.
And the assumption is that if a student is close to his or her teacher somehow, they must be culturally responsive?
Yeah, I think if there's, if there's not a, if we don't see growth in the student, the student measure of student-teacher relationships, we could assume that they're not being culturally responsive, I guess is how I would say it.
Yeah, that might, I see what you're saying, Jackie.
You know, I defer to the group. I was just trying to say it out loud and.
I understand that, I understand what you're saying. It's, it's tough to come up with something that's specific to cultural responsiveness that there's a good metric to, to measure, I guess.
No, I guess you could probably look at that, you could look at three B and look at it by demographic of student. Couldn't you? So, and then, so you might, if you see a trend that, you know, I don't know.
So I see you, so approach it like.
Students of color, well, I think it's the same question, but maybe the way that you're trying to get closer to cultural responsiveness is if, I don't know, white students have a much stronger student-teacher relationship than a student of color.
So, so approach it like, like, like my next version of the disproportionality in, in student discipline issues is, is approached? Is that what you're saying? So we don't single out a particular group?
Well, I don't think you are in three B.
No, but, 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 but do add the element of disproportionality, but not make, but not single out one, one group in that.
I don't know. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to confuse. I think, I think I was just trying to say out loud.
No, I hear what you're saying.
I mean, my overarching comment on disproportionality, and maybe this is the wrong approach, is that we should look at everything we measure at every student-identified demographic. So while we're looking at, at black students, we're looking at Latino students, we're looking at white students, just because I think, so I don't, I don't think we have to call them specifically out unless there's a compelling need to call them out. And I don't think, so I'm not suggesting that. a compelling need to call them out. And I don't think, so I'm not suggesting that.
Yeah, I do think the way we've written this, though, when I think about the composition of the teaching and learning, learning staff and whether or not it diverges from our regular demographics, I think we hit that. I think that's a much more specific and definable issue or whatever, but I think cultural responsiveness isn't adequately captured. And I don't know how best to measure that. I think that this is an approach, but it actually feels like it's, it forces the fit a little bit. I don't know.
So, but could you, if you looked at 3B by demographic? So you, you sliced and diced it, and if the if white students would score, what, higher, they'd have a stronger student-teacher, can you correlate? No?
Yep. But almost the way I look at this, when he defined it, how strong the social connection is in and beyond the classroom. I mean, is that like, gosh, my teacher showed up at my dance recital. And that's a great thing. That's not cultural respons-
Oh, I see.
responsiveness. Right? I don't know, maybe I'm just saying it too literal. I'm sorry.
Would it be, would it be helpful if I read to you the questions that are asked in that area?
Well, yeah, that might be helpful to put it into context.
There's, there's five questions. How many of your teachers are respectful toward you? If you walked into class upset, how many of your teachers would be concerned? If you came back to visit class three years from now, how many of your teachers would be excited to see you? When your teachers ask how you are doing, how many of them are really interested in your answer? And how many of your teachers would you be excited to have again in the future? Those are the five questions that comprise the, that category.
Yeah, it even makes it less compelling to me now. Sorry.
No, that's okay. I, I was, I was really struggling to come up with something that was directly responsive.
So can I ask a question? Do we have a shared definition of what we mean when we say cultural responsiveness? Because I think if we could have clarity around this table about utilization of that term, that might help the superintendent to gain clarity around what the most appropriate measure is.
So it's interesting. I was just thinking, there's cultural understanding and then cultural humility, cultural responsiveness is, like, you can understand it, but are you, like, responsive to a, to your point, humility? I don't know that we do. Well, the district has undergone a great deal of professional development about being culturally responsive. So I would turn to Dr. Aheart for what PD has been provided about the district's view of being culturally responsive. And I'm guessing there should be something even written in our equity plan. Can you, can you speak to that, Dr. Aheart?
Well, yeah, e- except that the, the, the issue is how do we demonstrate that that practice is actually happening? Is the, you know?
There is a common understanding of what it is.
Yeah, not, I don't think there's a, we don't have one that's, that's specific to cultural responsiveness, I don't believe.
What do you have, what is your professional development a- around? Is it cultural humility or cultural understanding? Like, what's the?
Yeah, first, it, we, we started with, you know, essentially cultural understanding, cultural literacy is what, is how we referred to it. And then we're, we're progressing from there with more of an anti-racism bent to it. With, which, which, you know, is inclusive of, of cultural, you know, cultural sensitivity, cultural literacy, responsiveness. I mean, the one, the one thing that I would really like to use, there are some tools that, that are, to do them right. They're, it's a pretty long, you know, it's a pretty involved process. That would be pretty time consuming, but where, where every, in this case, teacher would, would be measured, you know, on, on their, essentially their, their their biases. Which presumably would mean that they're being culturally responsive.
So when you say to do it right, it would, can you speak to that a little bit more? Because I think all of us at the table are in favor of doing it right, even if we, it took time to collect data to get a baseline. So, board members, please jump in if you're disagreeing.
Yeah, so there would be, everybody would take, and there are a few different tools up there, but the, the, the principle of it is that everybody would take this assessment, and there are some very good ones that you can't really game. Because they're, they're sort of time-limited responses. And then you receive coaching based on how you responded, because you, you get an overall score, but there's also specific areas that that he, that are identified for every person who takes it, and then provide individual-specific PD, essentially, in the form of coaching, that helps change behavior. And that's something we've, we've actually considered before and haven't you know, haven't figured out a way to make, to make the appropriate investment. But if that's the direction the board would like to go in, we certainly can get it done. Just, we would just need to figure out, you know, how do we structure that? And then how do we prioritize that in the budget?
So I'm not saying we shouldn't do that, but it feels like there's a step before that. And, and I'm wondering if we can identify the step before that, since this is imminent and right in front of us. So like, when I think about the cultural literacy that you've talked about, or some of the other professional development, that, you know, by the end of the year, all teachers will have gone through some form of pres- professional development, what's the, what's the assessment of its success, the test out? Like, I'm just trying to understand how do we know that the training worked?
Right. So what I'm hearing is that, that 3B doesn't hit the mark, but something that speaks to a, a direct outcome of what are, a, a demonstration of what our teachers have learned in professional development is what would be more satisfying, as close as, as close as I can tie it to cultural responsiveness.
I think that's better than where we are right now, for sure.
Yeah, I would agree, but are we currently conducting those, the, the PD that I, I, I mean, I, it's been five-plus years since I participated in that training. Are we still conducting that, a similar training for our existing employees?
Uh, yeah, and it looks different with different, you know, with different groups, but, but everybody's still engaged and they've, in, in some form of, of, you know, anti-racist, cultural literacy-based PD.
And that's annually?
And Tom, that is, is that required? I guess I thought there was, I thought I remember talking to staff that it was, some of it was voluntary.
Well, some of it, there, there are lots of optional things, but there's, but, but every building is doing some form at the building level. And it's based on, you know, where, where their staff is and where their building leadership teams decided they should put more emphasis in their plans. But if we have a goal around it, you know, a goal specific to it, that will change.
And so is it only one training that people go through and is that upon hiring currently?
Well, it would, i- it's not something that they, that you just get upon hiring. There's some that you get upon hiring, but then, depending on which work, work group you're in, you would have some ongoing professional development that's, that's rooted in the needs of your department or your, or your school building. And what your, how your building leadership team decided to invest that time. But, but everybody's doing something in regards to this.
Everybody has to do it. It's, it's, it's not optional.
It's not, right, but it's not universal, like, not every building's doing the same thing at the same time.
So can I just share a couple of things?
So I asked AJ a week or so ago for a few examples of some guardrails, and there is actually one from the Columbus City Schools that is around ensuring a culturally responsive staff. And it says the superintendent will not allow the staff to be culturally non-responsive. The interim goal guardrail, first one is the percentage of staff who complete the Equity and Inclusion Diagnostic Survey instrument will increase from X to Y. The second guardrail is the percent of staff with access to curated professional development modules on cultural responsiveness that are relevant to their job category will increase from X to Y. And then the third is the percentage of staff utilizing curated professional development modules on cultural responsiveness that is relevant to their job category will increase from X to Y. I don't know if that helps at all. And I don't know if there's anything that we're already doing around professional development or training that somehow might be adapted to reflect on any or all of those, but that's just maybe a sense of, maybe the direction we potentially, or that Tom could potentially go with this.
Yeah, what I'm hearing is that we don't have a good baseline and that the baseline needs to be developed. So even if the PD exists, if it's not a, a system-wide thoughtful, you know, the entire system is getting the same training. You know, we've got, the jumping off point is writing the guardrail, making it a focus of the board, so that those structures can be put into place, and then we will have a baseline. So I don't know what the recommendation from AJ would be with regards to writing an interim guardrail when we don't yet have the data. I know we discussed it briefly and very high level in previous sessions, but perhaps we should go back to him and say, what would you recommend when we don't have baseline or we don't have meaningful, you know, I don't want to put something into place that, that Tom, you don't feel is going to correlate properly, or is not truly a good measure or indicator of the success of the third guardrail, just because we don't have anything better.
Yeah, and the other thing about those Columbus City School examples, because I did, I, I, I looked at those as well, and I, my, my take on them was that I thought that this board wanted something tied more directly to outcomes and not what could be argued are inputs with those examples. But maybe that's where we need to be, given our starting off point, as Ms. Marterano just illustrated.
So why don't we put this one just on hold, consult with AJ, but Tom, if you want to do that in the interim, and come back with something more specific for our consideration.
Sure.
Okay. So on 3A, I think that we want to have something that extends beyond individuals being interviewed. And on 3B, we're going to ask for some coaching from AJ.
And then if we want to touch on 3C, I think it was Ms. Norris asked the question, or maybe it was Ms. Alonzo Diaz, I don't, I'm not sure about what, about how we measure participation. So right now, what happens is at the, at the beginning of an activity, we, we keep track of all of this at Infinite Campus, but we don't, we don't actually roster students in Infinite Campus until, you know, about the first week or so, because you tend to have students that, you know, say they're going to participate, maybe show up the first day or second day and then quit. What we don't do, though, is, is, in the current data that we have, is, is take how many are still active at the end of the season. That's what we, and we can do that. So that's what we would, that's how we would measure this goal, would be an end of season. How many are, are still on the roster and use that as a comparison against future years, which we've not done, but would begin doing in that, in that manner.
Right. And yes, my, my concern there was that we were maybe measuring the amount of students participating, but not really measuring retention of students in activities. So yes, taking a look at, you know, what you end up with at the end, definitely will tell us whether or not you know, we're doing the work. Thank you.
Yeah.
So we good with 3C?
Hearing nothing, we'll move on to number four. Superintendent Aheart?
The superintendent shall not allow an environment for both students and staff. That is unsafe and unwelcome. This, again, is, is pretty reliant on on our Panorama survey, but I, if you'll notice in 4C, so 4A and 4B are the same measure, except split out by, by grade band. And then 4C is actually the staff measure of school climate. And I can, I can pull, I can pull that up.
So I will say, while you're pulling it up on this one, I'm struggling, because I'm not sure this gives us enough insight into things like, I don't know, incident reports. And again, maybe that's not the best measure. The progress to hiring all of the restorative justice coordinators. Like, there's, there's a safety plan that I think I'm, I know I'm still expecting, and I know that's something that Chair Bradley requested. That would better help me articulate other things that we should be looking for. But this feels very, this doesn't feel, this feels superficial to me.
Yeah, I, my thought, when I looked at this earlier this afternoon, was I think there's an element of the survey data that's important, but it shouldn't all be predicated on survey data. It should be predicated on the operant, operative, whatever, operationalizing of our plan. And the implementation of that with fidelity, if we said we were going to have X number of people hired, in place, trained, ready to go, how do we demonstrate that?
Using restorative justice practices.
So maybe, Tom, maybe one of the measures could be on the Panorama data on school safety across all student groups. But then I feel like the others need to be a bit more focused on the doing, not the feeling.
And I think just to ask, Teri, would it be okay to include teachers and staff in the?
Is there a difference between safety and climate? I have to assume there is, Tom.
Yeah.
Yeah, there is.
And I think we said our focus was safety. Not to say climate is unimportant.
Right. We actually wrote it as unsafe and unwelcome.
Yeah, the climate should be encompassed in that unwelcome.
Say it again.
Go ahead, Kelly.
No, we wrote it as unsafe and unwelcome, so that that, to me, relates to climate and not necessarily just safety. not necessarily just safety.
So are we, just to give clear guidance to the superintendent, do we want to keep both the school safety and the school climate measures? And you'll also notice that he did grade level. So I think we need to give more guidance.
So I was understanding that Ms. Caldwell Johnson was suggesting combining 4A and 4B, removing the grade level indicators, we'd be looking at school safety in one and school climate in the other, and then a third, which hasn't yet to be written, focus on the doing.
Can I ask? So combine 4A and 4B so that all grades are included and then keep 4C or? Okay, because one, one thought I had is, and this would be more probably tied more to climate as interpreted by students, but would attendance rate be something that the board would think would be responsive to that?
No.
Okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, that was my personal, if we only get three, let, let other people speak. I mean, if we only get three bites at the apple. But I welcome other comments.
I think the question is, is there a way that you can directly correlate attendance with unsafe or unwelcome? And you probably, I mean hypothetically you could, but I don't know that that's gets to the heart of what we're intending here, right?
No, that's helpful. That's, yeah, we can, we can do that.
Okay, so we've got for, for A and 4B to be combined, we've got to keep 4C and then we've got, we want something that's on doing, the superintendent would need to create an interim there. Okay, moving on to number five, I know that superintendent just wants to know if we feel like this is the right space for him to be in, or do we want to give guidance for something else? And Tom, I'll let you go ahead and speak to number five.
Yeah, this is a, this one felt difficult to capture everything in three, in three So I just wanted to get a, excuse me, first blush from, from the board on these three.
Can you explain?
I was just going to say, I do think that our takeaway, or at least my takeaway from our last conversation was that we would try to capture this in buckets, finance, HR and operations. So I think the attempt to get there is laudable. I'm not for sure this is exactly where we needed to end up, but I appreciate you taking the suggestion.
Yeah, so the first is, is, you know, with relation to business and finance, this is really the thing that is kind of, it's not the thing we spend the most time on, but it's, it's really a driver of, of, of all of our budget discussions just because it's so much impact on what we're able to do. And, and speaks, speaks to ability to sustain programming. And so that's, I guess, the, that first one is pretty straightforward in that regard. This is something that, that a lot of districts keep track of. We keep, we keep track of it and it used to be extremely minimal. We might have one or two usually special education positions that weren't filled and it, this is becoming increasingly more challenging to have all of our positions filled with, with qualified teachers on the first day of school. So I don't know if that speaks to what the board would like to see with regards to HR. It's certainly something that is increasingly important for us or has, has become an increasing challenge for us. And then the last one is something that we don't have in a, in a universal measure, but we're, we're working on doing this, is we, we pull or survey all of our department heads and building leadership on a, on an ongoing basis with, with regards to, you know, response to work orders having to do with, you know, anything operational, whether it's a, you know, a restroom that needs fixed or a water fountain that needs fixed, that kind of thing, or overall cleanliness, you know, the performance of the custodial staff, that type of thing. So I don't know if, if that's something that speaks to, you know, organizational excellence in, in your mind in that area? Or if something that's more outward looking would be more appropriate in your mind, in your minds, your collective mind?
I think I need a bit more time to think on this one. Cause can you just specifically for business and finance, what are you recommending other than it's a bucket? Do you have, do you have a particular?
On the Unspent Spending Authority?
Yeah, that was, that was.
I almost have a different version. Oh, that's why.
The Unspent Spending Authority will increase from 11% down on July 22 to 15th.
Well, I do think that the Unspent Spending Authority does have implications for our overall budget and how that reflects back on meeting the state requirements for expenditures in any, any given year. I think the question is, is that a measure that translates to the public? And how do we define that in a way that helps them understand why this is the right measure of operational excellence from a fiscal perspective? I mean, you know, typically what you would say is a balanced budget, right? But it's a little more complicated than that. So I'm not for sure that. I mean, I think it could be this, but are there other things that you thought about, Tom, that could be considered here as well?
Yeah, you know, we, we talked about, because we've been working on a number of things in business and finance over the years, but most of them I don't think would, would translate to our community in a, in a way that says, hey, they're doing, they're doing well. You know, we have, we keep track of, you know, for instance, errors on paychecks and driving that number down. We keep track of how long it takes to pay an invoice, you know, and, and driving that number down. The one thing that I, I, I looked at over the last several years is, you know, the certified annual financial report, which by the way, they're trying to change that language to call it something else, but it's the same thing. And how do we do with our audits, you know? But again, if we're, if it's something that we want to measure over time, we really have had very, very few, you know, findings of any consequence. So it's hard to measure that over time and say we're, we're improving. If, if there's almost nothing there to, to show improvement over time, I think it's meaningful and we want to stay there, but I don't think it speaks necessarily to a smart goal measure.
Tom, is there a way that this could be framed around how we maximize the use of our levies in a way that creates a more sustainable, long-term outlook? In other words, I know that we of course set the tax rate, but there are a lot of things even beyond just the tax rate that take into consideration how we leverage and balance each of the levies against the others in a way that helps to make us whole. So is there anything around that sort of exercise that could be measured in a way that speaks to, from a fiscal perspective, operational excellence? I'm just thinking out loud.
No, I like where you're going with it.
The other place that I was, and again, I don't know if this is, Jenna, you had given me this idea that was more around enrollment and enrollment trends and the volatility. Is there anything that, that better speaks to? I mean, it's, it's the same, whether it's alternative sources of revenue, it's solving for the real issue, which is decreasing enrollment, like is there something that is more proactive in nature and that could speak to your alternative sources of revenue piece? I, I need a little bit more time on this one. Sorry, I, I.
Excuse me.
Maybe what we might want to do as well is get a little coaching around these two because they're new. We didn't have the benefit of sort of talking them through with AJ the way we did with the others the last time. So that might, if the lights go off again.
I don't know if this will spark any thinking, but there's, we do, we have paid really close attention to grant dollars, excuse me, grant dollars returned. That doesn't speak to additional revenue, but it does speak to utilization of additional revenue. Trying to, what I'm trying to do is think of things that we already have a measure I like the levy idea. I'm not sure, I, I'm going to need to do some thinking about how we craft that into a smart goal that's, that's translatable to the community.
Yep.
I'll just add a little context to what Jackie said, which is like, so I've been here two months and I sat in the financial orientation and then reading through what was provided as far as the financial booklet from last year. And it just seemed like I heard again and again, like your students are your bread and your butter. Enrollment is so critically important. Enrollment, it just seems like from the financial perspective, that's like, that I heard that in both places as a critical thing to be looking at. And so it seems like if it's not in here as a goal that we're even aware or monitoring, and I know that doesn't all fall on your shoulders. I'm just trying to put together something that I heard was urgent and how do we make sure that as a board, we're aware and being proactive to this thing that really makes the whole engine run, which is enrollment.
What about, what about a smart goal around, around open enrollment out and open enrollment in? And increasing a we in and decreasing a we out?
I like that direction, in my opinion.
That gets to, I think that gets to that. It doesn't.
I, I definitely think it gets to it. I, I just want us all to be really thoughtful and mindful about the implications of that, especially given what's happening with diversity plans, what's happening with charter. And there are pieces of that that we will definitely have the ability to control. There are pieces that we will not. But I just want us to be thoughtful about the accountability back for that measure when there are so many things in play there that we just don't have the ability to control. And I, I want to, I want us to be really thoughtful about that.
I do think what's interesting is, and I'm just wearing my past, pastoral goodwill and a huge part of our conversation as government funding was declining was alternative sources of revenue. And so I wonder if it's, if it's more geared along some of the conversations around grant dollars, increasing the number of grant dollars we seek, or I, I don't know whether it's the, the levying, but I mean, if we were thinking about it from a, from a board perspective and financial health, financial health would say we need more money. How are we going to get it? If we feel like the enrollment is so hard to, there's so many complicating factors, what are other things that we're trying to do to generate additional revenue to fill shortfalls? I mean, that.
The only thing I, I challenge with grants and I don't, I'm not, I, I know that it's a way to bring in more revenue. However, in order to do that, it's not as though those dollars just get to fund your operating budget. You actually have to do something for it. And so that potentially could need more staff to build a program. I mean, if it's already to supplant and support programs already in existence, absolutely. But I don't want to go get grant money because yay, we can get more money, but then really we have to do something else for that.
I just want to go back to what Superintendent Ahart said, because I was just thinking about enrollment in does seem like something that we could have more control over versus enrollment out necessarily. I feel like that, I just, in thinking about that of trying to build a plan around attracting and showcasing what makes us good. I do feel like there is possibility to control that more than necessarily enrollment out in that regard.
Yeah, the grant, the, the grant, I think Ms. Sawyer makes a good point about grants. We have a grant review team that we put together about four years ago because, for just that, that reason. We have, you know, people say, well, we can get money for that, we can get money for that, we can get money for that. And what we do as a, as a team is evaluate that and see, is this really going to accelerate our progress toward our intended outcomes? Or is it going to be more revenue, but it actually diffuses focus and actually makes it harder to, to get where we're going? So it, there, there are a lot of dollars out there, but it's, it is difficult to identify meaningful amounts that are actually allow us to get there in a, in a way that doesn't actually create a gap or, or slow us down. Yeah, that's a, yeah, this is a bugger of one to try to get nailed down in, in one interim guardrail.
How much does staff retention or teacher retention save the district? So if we don't have to train people.
It's, it's not insignificant. Yeah, it's not insignificant. I can't give you a hard number, but when we were putting together the blue contract and, you know, and figuring out how much is the master's degree going to cost and, you know, what is, what's the real cost going to be, it, it actually, because our, we retain such a high percentage of those teachers, it saves us significant money in professional development. So that, that's not a, that's not a bad, that's not a bad measure to look at because it's, it's sort of invisible, but it's dollars that get redirected somewhere else when we don't have to expend them. Right? That's a good point.
Right. So if, if we look at staff retention and increasing that along with enrollment in, is there something that could be written combining those two things?
Well, actually, what if, what if we had the staff retention fall under the HR bucket?
I like that a lot, Marianne.
Well, and that really sort of goes to our first speaker tonight.
Yeah.
I don't know what idea she had. Maybe we cut her off before she got to those, but I'd be interested in hearing them.
We did, but I shot her an email.
Okay, good. Thank you.
So then if I'm, if I may, it sounds like you still want to have something with finance and operations and HR. Those are the three buckets that you would like to see conveyed in number five. It looks like we said that staff retention for the HR bucket might be the way to go there. Maybe, Tom, based off of some of the things you've heard. Maybe, Tom, based off of some of the things you've heard, you can come back with something in the finance and operations piece for some interim guardrails for us.
Yeah, could I run one idea past you on on the operations piece, and that is having to do with energy efficiency and and measuring basically how efficiently we're operating buildings? I don't know if that's something that the board would say speaks to excellence now.
I was gonna suggest, I don't know if it could be something connected to the revenue purpose statement and investment in
Oh, that's a good idea.
activities or capital investment, more focused on like how well we're taking care of our assets. There's a couple of different places, but 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 to me, it seems like there's an opportunity to think about. Again, I don't I don't know what it is, if it's.
Yeah, maybe it's the enhanced investment in physical facilities, even beyond just school buildings and extending into athletics and activities consistent with the facilities advisory committee recommendations. I mean, there's enough there that.
I guess the question is, is it worth it to call out specifically things that were ineligible but for the revenue purpose statement change? Because it seems, I don't know, I feel like whenever I talk to Dave or others, they would say that there has been now a fair amount of investment in our school buildings or HVAC systems, things like that. And so where some of the places of need seem to be are facilities, I guess, defined as activities related facilities. So I I'm open to for interpretation. I was just thinking about that as a as a potential operations.
Is it, is it a capital asset strategy specifically as a?
Okay, I'd like to just do a recap of kind of where we're at and then kind of talk about what our next steps forward would be. So, Tom, just kind of repeating some of this, but just making sure we're all on the same page. It looks like 1B or 1C is what you did with land on. It looks like for 2A and 2B, you were going to review the panoramic data to see if you wanted to stay within those numbers or if you wanted to make any changes to those percentages. 3A, you were going to look into it. 3B, we were maybe reach out to AJ as well as we were having the discussion about teachers and their professional development. 4A and 4B are going to combine, keep 4C, and then look at another one to go there. And number five, it seems like we want to stay in the areas of finance, operations, and HR operations, maybe something around the revenue purpose statement, HR, looking at potential staff retention. Okay, that sounds good. So I would like to kind of keep this going. As you know, we're we're on a tight schedule as far as getting things approved. I know that next Tuesday, we will be meeting to vote. Would like us to look back at interims. Tom, are you able to get something to us this is by Friday?
Yeah, actually, this the timing is good on this because I I'm meeting with chiefs tomorrow, and so I'm going to I'm going to steal some of the agenda, established agenda, so that we can work through these remaining ones. But yeah, I will, I will have something with all the numbers with the exception of on a couple of them, if we don't have a baseline, what I will do is is not as part of the interim guardrail, but but throw out close to what the starting point would be, just just for context for you.
Okay, so we've got something coming from Superintendent Ahart Friday at the end of the day, which would allow us the weekend quite a few days to look over them and be ready to discuss those again on Tuesday. I will reach out to AJ. I'm sure Superintendent Ahart might as well. I will just be reaching out to him to give him an update of where we are. This video is recorded. He can look at that as well. I've been texting him through the night with some things as we've been discussing. So look forward to hearing back from him. And we will continue with our interim guardrails with the hopes that we can get these approved in February.
Will AJ be available next week?
He might not be, so it might be a lot of it might be a lot of me just sending him messages as he's available through text. So if there's questions we have, if you all see me in my phone, it's because I'm kind of going back and forth with him. But I will see what his availability is. Last I checked, I don't know if he will be, but I'll see if he will be available. And if we could meet at 5:30 on the 25th, Tom, does that work?
Yep.
We are doing, we're voting. We had our close, we had a close, we're voting next week, and then we're also going to be going back to this. Tom will give this to us at the end of the day on Friday. And we'll the same discussion we had going through and seeing if we believe he's on the right track. And if everything looks good to us, then we'll we'll put these to a vote at the next board meeting. All right, thanks, everyone. We are adjourned 9:05 PM with our work session. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you. Hope you're feeling better, Tom.
Yes.